This is the Planning Board meeting of January 7th, 2014 at 7:00. If we could please stand to pledge allegiance. All right. Because no one is here for new business and we can't go on to old business until 7:15, we'll go on to other business. And the first would be Planning Board notes. Does anybody have anything that they would like to say?
I was wondering if I could ask Mr. Hunter a question.
Sure.
Mr. Hunter, if I may through the chair.
Yeah.
Maybe you could just give me a brief explanation. My thought is where the solar panels are, they're all covered with snow.
Yeah, I noticed that yesterday and I have not called and they are responsible to clean those off and I will do that.
They is the state, am I correct?
No.
No?
The owner. Solar America's responsibility.
Yes.
They have a local contractor who does that for them.
Thank you.
Yep. Good call. I did see it, Mrs. Hanlon. I, you know, went right through the head.
If nobody else has any Planning Board notes, we'll go on to Planner's Notes.
Just a couple of things, I believe. It's 7:04 that we now have a new town administrator. I know that they have agreed on a contract and Mike Malansky from Cohasset will be starting tomorrow morning. I have a meeting with him with the school department at 8:00 a.m. I don't know Mike, other than I've met him twice now from resume. He's a certified planner and he worked in economic development offices and so I think he'll be a good ally and friend to the Planning Board and some of the other boards I work for. I also submitted the budget that I showed you last week with no changes. And lastly...
Question on the budget?
Yes.
Did you include monies for the master plan?
No, that will be a town meeting article.
Okay.
And lastly, I just found out today, I got a call from Magic Air. Magic Air does compressors, do they?
They do a lot of stuff.
A lot of stuff. They're currently on Commerce Way in Buzzer Artiarnos condos and they have bought the Bobby Hurley site with a carpet auto service.
Sure.
They just closed today and he's moved, well, he's not moving in, but he's getting the keys and starting. He's going to keep it essentially the same. He's going to use the garage for his equipment, have the office up in the building and then his place and stuff. He'll come into you probably just for a sign.
What type of business is this again?
He does, he does like, he deals in the air industry in Boston, a lot of the hospitals and big industries that require clean air or, you know, treated air for certain processes. So he deals with all that. So he's, he's a great asset in the town.
He was bursting at the seams at Buzzers.
He was going to be bursting there, I think.
Oh, really?
But there's plenty of room there for expansion and stuff and it's street.
Right on the issue.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll go on to the approval of the minutes of December 17th, 2013.
If I can apologize, we had some internal email blockage going on and that's why you didn't get these. Maybe since you got it finished, you can read them. The email never made it. I got it because I'm internal, but it never reached outside until today and I heard from you guys saying, "Don't, don't we have a meeting?" So... Make a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any correspondence?
I have none. On per half, I'm going to suggest that maybe I can start, we've got seven minutes, I can start the Norfolk Power mine modification class for them.
Bless you.
Then we'll table it, do your other meetings, and then if they're not here at the end, we can just, we're going to continue it anyway because of how the agenda was written.
Mr. Chairman, I may...
Will you take a three-minute recess?
Sure. We're going to recess for three minutes and we'll be back. Okay, it's now 7:15 and we're back from recess. And we'll go to public, well, we have under the new business receipt of plans for Norfolk Power Equipment. We're going to table that.
Well, for now.
For now.
I think you got to go right to sea, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we'll just go.
You'll have to read the public hearing.
Okay, at 7:15, we have a public hearing for AD Makepeace Solar Project Federal Road Special Permit Site Plan Review. And Town of Carver Planning Board Public Hearing Notice in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on January 7th, 2014 at 7:15 p.m. in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 1, on the application of AD Makepeace Company requesting site plan review and a special permit pursuant to sections 3100, 3124, 3580, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaws located on Federal Road map 131 lots 2-1, 2-2, and 2-3 in Carver, Mass. for constructing a ground-mounted solar photovoltaic array to produce approximately six megawatts of power covering a 29-acre portion of 66 acres. Any person interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the town clerk's office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair. Published dates, December 20th, 2013, and December 27th, 2013.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Kane from the AD Makepeace Company. With me this evening is Richard Cirque, who has chosen to stand, so I will as well. And Sarah Sterns from Fields and Thomas, who will now also stand. Without that table in between, I'm kind of confused as to what to be doing right now. I just want to take two seconds, if I could, and give you an update as to how we're here this evening. Several years ago, when the issue of sustainable renewable energy became a policy, a priority of the Commonwealth, we evaluated water, wind, as well as solar. After a variety of efforts, it became clear to us that despite thinking we're in a windy location, actually, we're not. We don't have the continual water flows to justify a hydro project by any means, but what we do have is some land that is away from neighbors, away from other areas of immediate development, that we think fits nicely with a solar project. We've done three in Wareham. We've completed two and one is well underway and will be completed and operational come this summer. One is that, I'll just jump over here for a moment if I could. Here's the town order, Carver, Wareham, what we refer to as a Charlotte furnace site just north of the electric right-of-way that comes through the property. We're now giving a 1.3 megawatt just south of that same right-of-way. And at 100 Rosebrook Way, amongst this bog, there's an island of dirt out here that now houses a smaller metering solar project, which provides power to a medical office building, which is not shown on this aged map, as well as to a couple of our larger ag pumps that are powered by electricity. So following the same basic principles that we followed in Wareham, we believe in Carver, we have found a parcel of land that has no neighbors. The closest developable lot today is one in Wareham, 1,600 feet away, and it's not developed at this point. Proud to say that the new bylaw in Carver is fully achieved by what's filed before you and we look forward to the conversation as we go forward. I will turn it over to Richard to frame why we're here for the three elements and then Sarah can take you through the particulars to the extent you have questions from the filing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
For the record, Richard and Sirke for the AD Makepeace Company. There are three forms of relief or three requests that we have before you. One is site plan approval. Two is a special permit under the solar bylaw section of zoning bylaw. And the third is rescission of the underlying subdivision freeze plan. Those are the three forms of reliefs that we are requesting. I understand that the hearing will be continued at any event tonight because there's a site walk that's scheduled for next Monday at 4:00 p.m. And as Jim indicated, with respect to the solar section of the zoning bylaw, we are fully compliant with the dimensional regulations set forth therein. As you will hear, there are some waivers that we are asking for in terms of submission requirements solely because of the size of the site and its nature. But with that, I'll let Sarah take over because it's really her show.
Okay. I'm just going to switch boards. For the record, Sarah Sterns with Fields and Thomas. I've got the submitted plan set behind this, which is exactly what you have in front of you. Can everybody see this? This is just a exhibit to put everything on one page, so I know that the layout plans are split. I know you don't like that, but it's a, it's a large enough site where to get the detail that we needed, we really had to submit two sheets, but everything is on one sheet for the exhibit plan, the one itself. And I think the most important thing to note on this site is the maintenance of the ductated buffer, 100-foot buffer, 200-foot property line setback amongst the development percentages stated by the solar bylaw. We met yesterday with the many of the department heads at a technical review session and had a good discussion about some comments and concerns that we are currently addressing, as well as the town review engineer from Fussin' O'Neil. And, you know, really kind of got through the nuts and bolts of the technical assessment of the site. We should have response to comments very shortly and we'll continue to work with all the department heads on their own particular comments and concerns. I think everyone's pretty familiar with the site. We have Federal Road here. This whole site is south of the existing landfill. Proposed access is from the existing sand road and construction access right off of that setback off of Federal Road. You know, no, no residents anywhere near the site. It really won't be visible from any public ways and details concerning construction sequence will be worked out once the operator is contracted with AD Makepeace. Any other points that are standing out in anyone's mind before we move over to questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I forgot to say earlier that when we started this, the project was wider and I was flat to the south. Once we get into the deep river, the Concom, we made the decision to stay out of the Concom jurisdiction. As a result, we got squeezed back from the road, back the, we went further to the south. Of course, a few people just don't know how the science wound up in that array design.
Jack, yeah?
Yeah, I can, first of all, I'm not sure where councilor found out we were having a site visit on Monday at 4:00, but did we talk about that?
We talked about it.
Were you there? Okay. I probably can't do that, but we'll, don't look to me that way. I don't remember. It's been, I've been off for two weeks. We did have a TRC meeting, you know, it's such a remote site, such a big site with very little impacts. How are you saying that? That there wasn't a lot of big issues, I would say, that's safe to say, and everything seemed addressable. I don't have any comments from the building commissioner. He was at the TRC. He believes it certainly meets the bylaw as presented. He had some issues about how it's going to be mounted and stuff like that and we did answer them. With the board of health, he, they feel there are no impacts to the abutters. They were concerned about glare, which was answered. Oh, and he had an answer about the usable life of panels. We found that panels are at least 25 years they'll last and now they're saying they can even last longer. And about how they will be removed and as you know from the bylaw, there will be some deconditioning assurances that will happen to be... And then he wanted to make sure that Fussin' O'Neil dealt with the runoff. The fire department, their biggest and only concern was the access road. As you know, they require three, they want three sides to be accessible. It currently is drawn, does not show that. They were already working on some ways to do that. I don't know if you want to share any of those thoughts yet.
It's done.
It's done.
We actually came up with a pretty good layout today that I can show you a draft copy of. This is not set in stone, but, and I haven't talked to the deputy chief about it. We're going to talk to him tomorrow, but this is a first go-around of their incorporating their concerns and comments. So we leave the access road as is for now, just, you know, as part of it. And then this blue line, we were able to squeeze in their 12-foot road outside of the fence.
Going outside.
Outside of the fence, which they seem to feel pretty strongly about. Some additional grading to make that happen over on this side and wrap it around here where we anticipate having a gate and connecting, will connect this road to the existing access that's already planned so that they can get those three, that three-sided access with a perimeter road, additional gates where we've come up with a couple different locations, but, you know, that can be up to them. And, you know, we'll walk through that with, with the deputy chief and see what he thinks about that and, and go from there. But we were able to do it with fairly minimal grading, keeping the footprint the same, not changing the arrays around at all, so.
He also wanted to make sure we have a maintenance plan for ground fuels and that is in your original document, if you have those packets. Conservation, they've already gone to conservation. All their work is out in the resource area, so they do not have to present this to Congress on, so Sarah really didn't have any issues other than that. I had very few because of the nature of the project. Sinage, they're going to limit this very to just the required signage for voltage and things like that. Landscaping, they may, I don't, and I thought maybe at the sidewalk around the retention pond, we may talk about, they want to keep the entranceway more anonymous, I guess would be the right word. And then we talked about construction and staging and if you recall, we had this issue with Ravenbrook. We had to keep moving stuff around and they're going to look and identify a logical sequence for staging the project as it moves along. Lastly, we had Fussin' O'Neil and again, he had very few comments. There was, I believe, one comment about the detention pond and the depth of it, was there not, Sarah?
It was, it was more just describing the type of basin that's proposed and looking for detail.
Okay, that was it.
So, I mean, that's, we can provide that this week as well. And actually, Eric Glass from our office spoke with Sean today and worked out a couple of the remaining questions that we didn't touch on specifically yesterday, so.
Right, he wants a test pit location, details on the infiltration basin.
I think he was okay with our test pit locations.
He was?
He didn't see them on the original plan, but they talked it through today and he was in agreement that what we've done is fine.
He also had an issue about staging, but that, I think, is about it. You know, again, the location and the nature of the project, the impacts were pretty minimal.
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
I just have a couple. Is there a contractor to install this? Because I noted on the plans you stated, a lot of this is done by Borrego Solar Systems?
We have two agreements in place with Borrego, one with Broadway Electric. I anticipate we will come to a final agreement with Borrego in the coming couple of months.
The other thing is around this adjacent property, you have future plans on development? Obviously maintaining that distance from, according to our bylaw, is there any other? How much closer are you going to get or how much knock down of vegetation?
One of the reasons we're placing this here is we have no plans for the area south of this to the Wareham Town Line.
At this time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's not kid ourselves. I mean, being even closer to a landfill is not necessarily a good thing. So we found a use that we believe is a use that can be next to a landfill that over the umpteenth coming years closes, becomes just this grassy hill. And then, you know, you look at the years ahead as to what, what it might do, but we have no such plans at this time.
Okay. I'm okay for now, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
And you plan that this may be in operation for 20 to 25 years?
20 years. What we've done in the two bigger deals we have is a lease that is for 20 years and then within six months of the culmination of the lease, it's their obligation to go in and remove everything and then put it back to just a, you know, a grassy field or whatever.
If no one else has any more questions, I'll open this up to the public if anybody would like to say anything. Seeing no one out there that wants to have, has any comments.
I'm going to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that you continue this to January 21st at 7:15. I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to January 24th at 7:15.
Second.
You have a motion in a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
About a sidewalk.
Yeah, a sidewalk.
I probably did tell the councilor that 4 o'clock Monday works. Doesn't add up to many, I'm sorry. I could do that.
Yeah, Mr. Hogan makes me be there for five days, so whatever you want.
He does. That's a shame. But he lets you just dress in jeans and a flannel shirt.
I'm talking about the land that I'm dressed on.
So that would be huge.
It would be good experience, actually, Jack, thank you. Whatever works with the board works for us.
I know you're a like...
So that would be Tuesday, the 14th.
You do 4:15?
4:30 even?
Yeah, 4:15 works, just four dozen.
When does it get dark though?
It's getting dark later.
Sunset's like 4:30 now.
Getting a little bit later now.
Yeah.
4:30, quarter of five.
So we'll have to get up there fairly early then, 4:00?
Well, sunset's at 4:30 now, so it's not going to be dark until later. Are there particular areas that the board would like to see because we can kind of plan? The site is quite large, we should kind of plan maybe some points.
Typically, they're going to want to see the entranceway, the detention pond, you know, it's a big site. What do we go at the access road to see this?
That's, that's the easiest way is to walk down the easement and we can kind of...
Walk down here.
Oh, yeah, we can absolutely get in there.
Actually, that...
This is the easiest way.
Yeah, so we maybe, maybe just do this and that.
Yeah.
That's about all you can access right now anyway, right?
There's a little road, an old test pit road that comes this way that you could walk down.
Maybe we meet at that entranceway? Is that the logical place?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
4 o'clock on...
The 14th.
The 14th.
Someone makes a motion. I'll make a motion to set up site plan review, excuse me, the same visit for the 14th at 4:00.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
It's 4:00.
Thank you.
No snow and at least 60-degree weather.
That's right.
We'll try.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, if we could do D really quick, since it's a continuation?
Public hearing on Crop Production Services Special Permit Site Plan Review for Warehouse Retail Space.
I think, I know I forwarded you this email from them asking for another continuance for two weeks, however, and I know we've been going on and I know I was going to ask them to come in and talk to you today. However, I did meet with Mike Gottlieb and his son and they did show me some plans that do meet the sprinkler bylaw. It's two separate buildings. It's pretty creative and it still gets them the square footage they wanted ultimately. They were going to have a meeting right after my meeting with the fire chief to see about having a canopy connect them, just so they have a little cover. And they had a unique way of putting the trucks for delivery in between the two buildings, so their engineer's going to have them and he promised me to have all the plans to me by next Tuesday. I can distribute them and hopefully we can wrap this up on the 21st. So I'm going to recommend you continue it to the 7:30 and 21st. Motion to continue the public hearing for Crop Production Services to the 21st of January at 7:30.
Second.
You have a motion in a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
So we still have, no one here for Norfolk Power Equipment, so we'll go on to receipt of plans for Rocky Meadow Solar Minor Modification on Zero Purchase Street.
I don't know, I guess we're going to have, I would like to have Rick Corbo from Coleman and Page kind of introduce why this is here. I mean, I don't have to introduce any of this to you, but maybe why it's here.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Rick Corbo from Coleman and Page as town council for the town of Carver. I'm not here on behalf of the applicant, but since this is a matter that has had a long history before town boards and is currently pending in the courts, I just thought I'd give you a little introduction as to how we got here and where we think this is going before I turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation to you. As you know, back in 2011, this board granted site plan approval for a certain project in the residential agricultural district off of Zero Purchase Street for a solar array project. The site plan was modified a couple of times and ultimately, the building commissioner issued a building permit. Subsequent to that, there was information that came to light that indicated... Subsequent to that, there was information that came to light that indicated that the, the building inspector and the zoning board of appeals had the authority to regulate this project even though it was exempt from the town's solar-specific bylaw. And in particular, my office gave an opinion that where there is no solar-specific bylaw that applies, a town can regulate a solar project or prohibit a solar project in a particular location if it's necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare. The matter went before the ZBA, and the ZBA determined that the project as then constituted could be prohibited to, to promote public health, safety, and welfare. The ZBA's decision was appealed to the land court, and the project proponent engaged in discussions with myself and the ZBA chair to try to reach a resolution before reaching a final judgment before the court. As a result of those discussions, it was determined that the applicant would submit to the town a revised plan that substantially reduces the footprint of the project, some of the setbacks, and increases the screening between the project and the residences in the area. So, what, the, the process that we envision this going through at this point is that the applicant would come to this board first to seek a minor modification of its, of its original plan, which they'll present to you tonight. And I believe that they're going to ask that you waive the public hearing and other submittal requirements so that we can get to a decision on that plan a bit quicker. Assuming, or if this board grants approval of the modified plan, that plan would then go to the building commissioner on an application for a building permit. If the building permit is granted, or I should say whether, regardless of the building inspector's decision or commissioner's decision, there'll be a period of time for an aggrieved party to appeal to the ZBA. If it's granted, a butters may appeal. If it's not granted, the applicant may appeal. The matter will go back before the ZBA, and it'll make, make its decision. It's expected that if the revised plan obtains all of the necessary local approvals, the applicant will no longer pursue the larger plan and will only pursue the, the smaller plan that's going to be presented to you tonight. So, the issue before you tonight is going to be whether you should accept the plan and grant the accepted waivers. And then, we would hold another public meeting to, for you to make a decision as to the plan itself. Questions from members of the board at this point?
Anybody have any questions?
I'm good.
Okay.
Steven, on the town's behalf, is there anything you'd like to add?
I will say this to the board. You folks are very familiar with this project. You have worked hard in your vetting process, and it was not an easy time for you folks. And the ZBA appreciates the groundwork that you did on this project. We did have an opportunity during our public hearings to review your decisions, and that was helpful to us as a guide. I think it's also important to say before the project folks make their presentation tonight, that the evolution of this plan, as it's worked its way through the various boards in town, has been, in my judgment, and I don't, at this point, make any final judgments about this, but in my judgment, it's moving in the right direction. You're going to hear tonight that the downsizing of this project is roughly 32% less than the project that was originally presented to you, that's a substantial downsizing. For the rest of the changes that Borrego intends to present to you folks tonight, I'll let them speak to those. But that's, that's the biggest one. The size of this project has been reduced significantly after consultations amongst counsel after this case was appealed following our decision at the ZBA. So, thanks to your board, first of all, for your hard work on this project, and thanks also to legal counsel from Copeland and Page who has worked assiduously to try to arrive at some reasonable resolution here that folks could eventually come to grips with and hopefully accept in the long term. Again, the decision, finally, if it does get appealed to the ZBA, is ultimately going to be up to us again, and I want to say for the record, I've made no final decision about this, but again, I, I think it is moving in the right direction at this point. So, I'm interested in hearing who, hearing what Borrego has to say tonight, because I'm sure all of you are too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, I'm Rich Rayon, prime engineering.
Back again.
Just quickly to review, this is the plan that you approved in the past.
Thank you.
The, the magenta line in here is a solid eight-foot-high fence coming up here to screen, and then there's a 40-foot vegetation that was going to be preserved along here, and obviously along here. The revised plan still has the, still has the fence here. Added to it is a gate that is solid vinyl, eight-foot-high. It's been changed, specified to be earth tones so that it blends in. The panels now have been moved way back, so they're 200 feet from the property line. The fence has been moved back, so it's about 115 feet back, and there's an eight-foot-high earth berm that is proposed here. And on top of the eight-foot-high berm, our double-row staggered eight-foot-high Leland Cypress. So, we have a total height of 16 feet of, of screening along here. Still preserve the 40-foot of natural vegetation, and in between the 40-foot thickness of natural vegetation and the earth berm is a double-row staggered white pine to infill. So, they'll, they'll completely infill the gap. So, essentially, the 100-foot band of vegetation along with the earth berm and then grass here, so that total of 200 foot. The balance of the site is the same, the, where the invert pad is roughly where the, where the rows are in the access road here is the same. The north-south access road has been eliminated completely. The field is small enough so that this single access road is plenty, large enough for them to access and maintain their panels. So, as was stated, the, the footprint of the solar field has been reduced, moved back, and fully screened. That's it.
Anybody have any questions?
Question. Access for the fire department?
This, this, what is shown here is brown. They, they wanted a paved road in here. There's a gate, and it comes around here, and this was dimensioned and approved by the Fire Department U for the turing radioactive equipment.
But they always wanted at least three, three sides accessible.
Well, can I, Dan? Was there not original, can we go to the original? You see there's an access road there.
So, it's the same thing, it's like?
We're going to have an, an issue with the fire department. As you heard from the last applicant, they require three sides to be accessed. I haven't shown them this yet because the holidays, but I, you know, this.
Yeah, again, it was part of the negotiations to eliminate it. If, if the town wants it, we certainly can add it back. It's not, in this case, it's going to be what the town wants, not what we're wanting.
Yeah, in that area, that's on the new plan, where it's eliminated, what, what is that right there? Is that the, that's after the big berm, right? That white location?
We saw it in between the panels and the berm.
Right.
But this is just grassed area, so we can still do something. Why don't we do an access road there?
Would you add that, please?
Sure.
Because I know the fire department always wants three sides. On the size of the soul, the solar array, there's, there's a significant reduction. How much are the KWs from the existing to now? Do you know?
I think it's correct, that's about 32% reduction.
So, a 32% that you reduce now, plus if I remember on the original, original, when you first came in, we reduced it, correct me if I'm wrong, like 50%.
50%.
So, realistically, in, on the new plan, it's almost 80% reduction from the original concept. And I think it's important that everybody hears that. We all know the public outreach and the public, what we have gone through, but that's 80% in my mind from the original concept of a reduction. And I think that's important. Other than that, the access, is that still going to be there on the new plan, or are you eliminating that access road?
Well, we could put the access road back in.
No, the entrance way. One coming in from?
Oh, the entrance way, yeah. That's still there.
That's still going to be there.
There was one person who was actually across the street who was concerned about being, looking at a chain link of fence, a gate. So, we're, we're changing that to basically, you know, earth tone vinyl gate, so everything's screened. We should be looking at that.
I think I'm good for that.
I'm good.
So, this has gone through all the, it has to go out to the fire department, or anybody has to take a look at this?
Well, it's a less of an impact.
So, the only thing?
I don't see anyone who would need to see it except perhaps the fire department.
Okay.
As far as departments, they've all vetted this, and it's less, less?
Less, everything's less.
Everything, and I think if they put the road there, perhaps, could you have a conversation with the fire, Deputy Fire Chief about this?
Absolutely.
Before you finalize?
Yes.
Could you tell me, on the original plan that we originally approved, where was the, how, what was the distance from the fence to the rear of those property lines? And what is it today?
It was 40, it was 40 feet to the, from the fence.
Fence?
The fence was 40 feet. I think it was something like 60 feet to the, to the first panel.
Okay, so it was 40, so the fence would have been 40 feet beyond the rear property lines. And what is it now?
Now, now, we have the berm 100 feet and, and probably another 15 feet to the berm, so it'd be 115 feet to the fence instead of 40 feet.
So, it's almost three times.
Three times.
Yeah. Plus, there's a lot more vegetation there, too, with the, with the trees.
Right, we're proposing planting eight-foot-tall white pine. We've spread them out enough so they're not crowding themselves. As you know, the, the pine can spread pretty wide.
Very quickly.
So, we have them staggered in double row.
Now, there's not going to be a fence on top of that berm, that is just going to be all natural?
Natural vegetation.
Vegetation, okay.
We're calling for, for Leland Cypress, which?
Which we're having on the other side.
And how, how tall are they when they're going to be planted?
They're going to be eight feet high when they're planted.
Eight feet high when they plant, and the berm is?
They grow, they'll grow 30, 40 feet high.
They grow high and very fast.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a solid screen within, within two years.
If you recall, that's what we're having on the, on the western side of the project. We're doing infilling.
Infilling, yep.
And how high is the berm?
Eight feet.
So, you're going to have 16 feet?
To start with.
Which is, somebody could be on the second story of their house and look over, and they'd, all they'd see was the vegetation, they wouldn't really be, be able to see into the solar field at all. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
So, originally, I think when Will was talking, we had a solar panel field that was across, was on the east, on the west side of the reservoir. That was eliminated before we approved the plan. And then, we just went to the, the east side, and, and then now, that's been reduced by 30%.
Right.
How many acres are the solar panels going to be on?
I don't exactly know, but this is a six, upscale warrant, so this is maybe, maybe it's 300 by, like 300, maybe, maybe two and a half acres.
That's relatively pretty small, considering, yeah. All right. Nobody else has any questions? So?
I, I think we'd like you to hopefully determine this is a minor modification and waive the requirement for a public hearing. And because of the nature of how the agenda item was crafted, I'm going to recommend that we table this until, and I'm hoping, since we already have a site visit, that we table this until the 14th. You have a site visit at four, we can do a meeting at 5:30. That way, we can just go do the site visit, come here and have the meeting. Does that work?
Works for me.
I need three of you. I know Kevin's away.
What is the purpose of table?
The way the, the agenda item is written, it says a receipt of plans, but does not discuss any discussion or, or possible vote. Under the open meeting law today, the way open meeting laws are scrutinized, I think we'd better be careful about that.
Right, okay.
I did this from a couple hours away, I didn't know what I was doing. Well, my input is, is this as the discussion for the board, and I don't know where you guys are at. We're looking at a much, much smaller project, number one, less impacts to the neighbors. In a, in a nutshell, as I stated before, it's an 80% decrease from what they proposed at the very initial concepts. I like the idea of the larger buffer, and if you remember, Carl, I mean, some of our hearings were trying to push for the 200. So, under our new bylaw, the meat and wire, the requirements on buffering, setbacks, stuff like that. So, I think that, all in a nutshell, it is a minor modification. We've done other modifications for other, other developers that have had more changes than that. But that's my two cents worth. I'd, I'd be in favor of making this a minor modification.
And waiving the public?
Yeah, I'd, I'd waive all the, the public hearing things and stuff, because I don't think we need that. I think we, we've had enough, and it's less impacts to the neighbors, so.
You need to make a motion.
Well, I just would discuss and see what people's thoughts were.
I'm fine.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Might I propose a form of motion if you are so?
Please do.
Do you want it, Will?
Yeah, I'll take it.
I have that, that's been moved out.
Thank you. And then give it to Kathy after that.
Okay, so in a motion, I move that we find that the applicant's proposal constitute a minor modification of the original plan approved by this board insofar as it does not materially or adversely affect the site plan review conditions of that the town's bylaw in that we grant the, the applicant's request for waivers from the submittal and public hearing requirements of the bylaw. That's it.
So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? So, everybody's?
So, Rich, will be 5:30 on Tuesday.
We haven't even made a, made a plan yet.
Oh, you haven't done that yet, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to set the, set the, the meeting up for January 14th at
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What I'll do is I'll meet with the Deputy Fire Chief, and he, if he requires this road, we'll put it on the plan and have a live plan to you so that what you'd be voting on and what, what is your requirement.
That's right.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
As far as item A, I'd say we table it to the 21st.
Since somebody? Since nobody's here, okay. So item A, receipt of plans for power equipment.
Motion to table?
Motion to table? Have a motion to table? Second?
Second.
We have two seconds. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.